Apologize. Good morning. I'd like to call to order the April Was that my punishment for being late?
I don't know what caused it, but don't do it again.
Okay, I'm trying to turn the mic on up there. Try this again. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Mobile County Commission for April 26, 2021. Please stand for our invocation from Minister Queen Gregory. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Queen, I'm gonna turn mine off and turn yours on.
Let us pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we come as humbly as we know how, first and foremost, always to tell you thank you for your goodness and mercy that follows us all the days of our lives. As we embark upon this county commission meeting, we pray for guidance for Commissioner Messeria Ludgood, Commissioner Connie Hudson, and Commissioner Randall Doitt. We also pray for our administrator, our deputy administrator, and all our directors and each employee of Mobile County, that collectively, we will continue to serve with a level of excellence, knowing that we will not, we dare not, we must not fail. These and all other blessings, we ask in your son's name, Jesus the Christ, and in agreement, we say, amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Commissioner. Your first speaker is Mr. Ed O. Bridgman.
We have a
Okay. Can, uh, can you hold for just a minute? We just, we need, we have the one presentation we need to make.
We have a presentation to make.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bridgman, just take a minute. Thank you.
Dr. Ischel, would you please step to the front? Testing?
Sure. I am going to step over here so I can I have, I have problems reading resolutions with a mask on. Well, good morning. For those of you who don't know, this is Dr. Bernard Ischel. We call him Dr. Bert Ischel. And he has, uh, he is, has dedicated his life to public health and safety and the safety of our community. And is, as I understand it, the longest-serving public health officer in the state of Alabama. Is that correct? Okay, so today, we are celebrating an anniversary, the 31st anniversary of him serving in the position. And we are so very happy to have you here today. We're so grateful for you and for all you do. And I don't think that has been illustrated any more so than over the last year with the pandemic and public health crisis associated with that and the great job that you've done in serving our county and our citizens. So we definitely wanted the opportunity to acknowledge your service, thank you, and read this resolution for you today. This is a commendation of professional achievement for Dr. Bernard H. Ischel II. Whereas the Mobile County Commission hereby recognizes Dr. Bert Ischel for his outstanding dedication, leadership, and commitment to Mobile County, we acknowledge his 31st anniversary as health officer for the Mobile County Health Department to be celebrated on May 1, 2021. And whereas he was born and raised in Mobile County, Alabama, he served his country in the U.S. Navy, retiring with the rank of captain. And he was, he has earned multiple academic degrees from Tulane University in New Orleans. And whereas Dr. Ischel has been an instructor at Tulane and an adjunct professor of medicine at the University of South Alabama, he has served as a science advisor and mentor for young scientists in the NASA Develop Program, based at MCHD. He is a Senior Aviation Medical Examiner for the Federal Aviation Administration. And he has received NASA and U.S. Navy medals, various civic community awards, and is a fellow in the American College of Physicians. And whereas, in addition to his medical duties, he is a very, he is very active in several civic organizations, including Mobile United, BIG, Mobile ARC, Community Foundation, Christ Church Cathedral. And whereas Dr. Ischel has earned the respect and gratitude of his colleagues as well as regional, state, and local leaders, including the public at large, for his adherence to the highest standards of ethical conduct and for his steadfast devotion to the betterment of health and medicine in Mobile County. Now, therefore, let it be resolved, the Mobile County Commission wishes to applaud Dr. Bernard Ischel on his extraordinary professional achievements on the occasion of his 31st anniversary as health officer for the Mobile County Health Department. Furthermore, we extend our congratulations and best wishes to him for continuous, continued success. Congratulations, Dr. Ischel, and thank you again. And I wanted to give you an opportunity.
Thank you very much. It's an honor and a privilege to serve the people of Mobile County. This has been a very, very hard year for everyone since 20 and 21. And it's been a team effort. It's been the community and the medical community working together to get to a position where we are now. Today, we have about right at 21 persons in the hospital with COVID-19. Our high point was 276. An amazing progress we've made together. We're about halfway getting our community vaccinated. So my suggestion is we move closer to the 4th of July holiday. Let's celebrate the 4th of July in Mobile County, Alabama, independent of COVID-19. So please, everyone, make an effort to get vaccinated. Celebrate the 4th of July with your friends and family who are fully vaccinated. Give everybody big hugs, because the six-foot distancing goes away when everybody's fully vaccinated and not wearing masks. Until then, we need to continue to be cautious. We've had an increase in activity of COVID and community transmissions over the past two weeks. It's not gotten terrible, but we've seen some impacts of spring break. So a little bit of caution is still recommended as we move forward. And thank you, and God bless Mobile County.
Thank you.
Mr. Bridgman?
That's a tough act to follow. Good morning. My name is Ed O. Bridgman. And I don't want anything from you. So I'm the owner of Homestead RV I'm the owner of Homestead RV Community. It's the most technologically advanced RV destination in the whole world. And it's right here in Theodore, Alabama. I'd like to officially invite everybody in this room to our grand opening on May the 8th. We'll be serving food from 11:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. And Mr. Randall Doitt, Commissioner Doitt, has graciously offered to speak at noon. But even with that, I think there's even more reasons why you should come. So over the past year, as, as the doctor mentioned, we've seen a lot of differences, a lot of changes. 62% of the workforce will no longer return to a brick-and-mortar office. People are teaching their kids virtually. More people are staying home all the time. And, uh, food and merchandise is being delivered by drones now. So people and government agencies who embrace and are prepared for the future will flourish. And people who are not ready or prepared, who are continuing to hold on to the past, will suffer as we pivot to the new norm. Everybody's telling us that we have to pivot to the new norm, but very few people are telling us what that looks like. How, how is, what is the new norm? Well, at Homestead RV Community, we have one of those many solutions that will be coming. And I'd like for you to come out and see it. As I mentioned earlier, it's the most technologically advanced RV destination in the world. But what you might not know is that in 2020, 4 million new American households chose camping. That raises it up to 86,100,000 Americans are choosing camping. 20 days out of the year. In 2021, that'll be raised to 25 days out of the year. In February of 2020, in February of 2021, RV sales were at 48,286. That's for new RV sales in February of 2021. Compared to the same February, uh, February of the year before of I have that number. It's a 31, 30.1% increase over the February of the year before, prior to the pandemic. What we're expecting is RV sales to grow to over 523,139, maybe up to 543,572 units will be sold in 2021. That's a 23% increase over 2020. Now, we all know that 10,000 new, 10,000 Americans are turning 25 every day. But what you might not know is that the largest segment of the camping community is the millennials. 37% now are camping. Generation Z makes up 52%. That's a total of 59% of Americans under the age of 50 are camping now. As I mentioned, there's 23% new RV sales in 2021. But what you need to compare that to is that we're only creating 52,000 new sites to set these up on in America. That's an increase of 0.178%. That's a huge difference in supply and demand. Each of you have, are aware of strip centers that are vacant, no longer producing revenue. Maybe we have a way of working through that. We're gonna have to change some rules in order to do it, but we could take advantage of those and make them into places to live. So I hope you all come out to the grand opening on May the 8th. Listen to Commissioner Doitt.
One minute. Excuse me, Mr. Bridgman, you have one minute.
I have one minute to say thank you very much for your time. Are there any questions?
No, I'll make a comment, though, Ed. I have had an opportunity to camp in the past and still camp some. And I have been out to his facility, and it is phenomenal if you get an opportunity to go out for the grand opening or before. And I want to thank you. You could've went anywhere in the country and built this facility. And I want to thank you for coming to Mobile County. You're not a native of Mobile. A lot of people don't know that here, but you chose Mobile. You chose to build your facility here, and we appreciate you doing that.
I'm honored to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other speakers?
Yes, Mr. Arthur Weaver, who has road frontage issues.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. Let me speak. My name is Arthur Weaver. I live on McQuary Road in Sim. Been out there since 1985. Since I lived there, I picked a piece of property up behind me. It joins my property. It's a two-story, uh, studio apartment with a, with a trailer, with a mobile home that I leased out. Right now, my grandson and his dad live there. But they're getting ready to move out and go into a house. And I'm having an issue with the people that bought the property next door to me. They, their entrance is from McQuary Road. Their property is, it was listed on McQuary Road. But they choose to use that dead-end street behind them, behind, over on the front of the house that I own, uh, paying taxes on, rather, and to get in and out. And they also allowing the, uh, the, uh, family, his son and his family, that lives on another street over there that joined the property, to also use that entrance. And, and I, I took some pictures, and maybe you can see, if you will, that, that the drive that I'm using to enter the property that I'm paying taxes on also is a drive to enter his piece of property. And I'm the one having to keep everything up out there. I, um, I always felt like that if you're paying taxes, you ought to have access to the road frontage. And I've always kept it up out on McQuary Road. And I've always kept it up back there. It's a dead-end street. They, they, when they left it, they left it like what they call a hammerhead. And people was using it for a cul-de-sac to just make complete turnaround. And I was having an issue with them coming all up in the yard and tearing it up. So I put a, a two-post up and stretched a cable across there to, to stop them from getting all up on the grass and one thing, and maybe divert them from even coming down there. And, and the neighbor that I'm speaking of is Mr. O'Brien, Patrick. And him and I haven't got along, and nobody over there, that lives over there, got along with it. And, and I know he's not here, and I, I know there's two sides of everything, or three. But, uh, if, if you, if you mention anything to him, it turns into like, um, an argument. So I just leave him alone. But now, uh, they, he put an electric gate there. And if he's coming out or going in, then I can't use my entrance to that over there. I have to wait. And, and they got to where they, when they leave out of there, they'll, they'll come out of the gate, and they'll, they'll drift all the way over to the right side where the mailbox is, to keep that muddy right there, because it's a low spot, and it stays water there anyway when it rains. And I've had a big issue with that. And, and thanks to you, uh, uh, they out there working on it. But now, Mr. Price knew about this way back, and he hadn't addressed it. I sent you some pictures. And you, you sent, uh, you even sent, uh, Mr. Neil Howard out to speak with me, and I appreciate it. And he, he, me and him spoke on it, and, and he seemed like he's trying to help me on it. Now, they are out there working on some issues, other than just the issue that I'm having with the driveway. There's some bad areas out there that, uh, that, you know, need filling in and fixing. Now, when, when they come out and, and, and fix this, they come out and throw dirt on, on the shoulder of the road, what's washed out real bad, and could cause somebody to, uh, you know, have an accident. Now, I've been riding motorcycles all my life, and a lot of people don't ride motorcycles. They don't respect motorcycles. They don't, they don't understand how unsafe it can be for a motorcycle for these areas to stay like this. But that's dangerous, dangerous for a motorcycle rider, for these. And when you address it with the, with the, uh, people that you feel like it can help you with it, and they ignore it, then it's kind of irritating when you pay taxes and they won't. And then there was a hole out there that's been there in front of McQuary. Uh, they come out and kept throwing dirt in. Well, the, the concrete carpet going through there had, had, had a hole in it, kind of underneath it.
Excuse me, Mr. Weaver, you have one more minute.
I think the pictures maybe speak for themselves. If there's any way y'all can help me, uh, detour the gentleman that's using that driveway. He's got, he's got two entrances he can use. He can use his son's entrance on another street that they use in that same entrance. Or he can use his entrance off of McQuary Road that was, uh, his entrance from the beginning. And, and that would, uh, that would, because to rent that place back out, I spoke to Mr. Wild, my ex-son-in-law. He's finna move into a house. And I lined somebody up to rent that, lease that place. And when I explained to him the situation, they withdrew. But they said they would, they would definitely like to still rent it if I could get the issue resolved. They don't want to be sharing no driveway with nobody. Now, the fence is down right now, because I took all the fencing down. But I'm getting ready to put it back up and fix it where the children can stay in it and a dog, if they, if, if will. And, and once they do that, and the gate hasn't stayed closed, well, when they come into the driveway, they're gonna have to stop and get out and open the gate. And these, this family don't wait. They even speed down through there. If, if his kid is out there playing on the dead-end street, you have to grab them real quick and get them out the way. They get to speed up. You know, like, get out of my way. I need some help.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. I appreciate you emailing the pictures last week. I know you had contacted my office, and my district administrator had asked for you to provide as much information as you could about the concerns and also pictures. And I, that's important that we do it that way, so that I have a, uh, an understanding that I can share with our Public Works Department or Engineering or whomever, you know, I would turn to, to, to look at the issue and see what we could do to help resolve it. I know that Neil Howard, um, did go out and, and speak with you, I think within a couple of days of your calling the office. Based on the information that you provided, you know, we were able to have a better understanding. And I think that the two issues primarily, that, that we've got some erosion and standing water, particularly when you have a lot of rainfall. And that's because the, it's been rutted out for, for, you know, people running off the road and what have you. And, uh, and then the right-of-way access issue. And those were the two issues that I asked our Public Works Department to focus on and look to see what we could do to help resolve any problems or if there was any unlawful activity in terms of access and, and anything like that. And, and our Public Works Director, Ricky Mitchell, I don't know if, Ricky, if you want to respond to both of those issues, or Neil, or both of you?
No, I'll respond. That'd be fine.
Okay.
So, um, we are current, we have a current service request in to handle the standing water on the edge of the road and also in the turns at AG and Alice and AG and McQuary. So those, those are in the works to be repaired. As far as the access, um, the right-of-way goes all the way to the property line. And, um, any individual that has, uh, that abuts the right-of-way has the right to access that right-of-way. Just like we wouldn't want to stop Mr. Weaver from accessing the road in front of the right-of-way in front of his property. We cannot exit, uh, deny the access to, I think it's Mr. O'Brien. We cannot deny that to our right-of-way.
I disagree with that, because let me say why. His entrance is off of McQuary Road. His son, them entrance is off of another street. They all using that entrance back there, and I'm the one keeping it up. Now, I pay taxes on that place, okay? And if I can't use the road frontage, then you guys, if y'all want to buy it, y'all can buy it and let Mr. O'Brien do what he wants to. Or Mr. O'Brien can buy it, but I can't, it can't stay like it is. There's no way. I'm 65 years old. I'm trying to get out from under stress, not stay under it.
So this road was paved in a 1996 Pagey Go. And, uh, the right-of-way is not necessarily maintained all the way to the property line of the next person. It's maintained to the point of use. And that's what we were maintaining it to at that point. And that's what it was paved to back on the 96 Pagey Go program. Mr. Howard did talk with Mr. Weaver that if, if that's something that is needed, we can maintain to that property line. It's, it will be difficult if the gate is closed. We can't get a piece of machinery, Pat, you know, to work all the way up to the fence. But we can get as close as we can get. And we're willing to do that. That's not a problem. But it, in the past, it has not been used. That doesn't mean it cannot be used.
And, and so y'all understand it's not just because I'm, I'm in no kind of contest with Mr. O'Brien. But now, uh, the right-of-way out there, if he was to move his entrance over to the right more, then he would be out of my driveway. I wouldn't have to sit there and wait for him to move to get out of the driveway. And that's what we're having to do. And they sit there sometime just deliberately for you to have to wait. Now, this is, uh, this is wrong. I'm paying taxes on that place. That's just wrong for me to have to sit and wait for somebody to move me to get out my driveway.
Well, that sounds like a, an issue between you and your neighbor, not a right-of-way issue.
Well, then what am I supposed to do? I, I asked him, uh, if he would use his entrance, and he said he had an easement to get in and out of there. But now, the, uh, Mr. Price and Mr. Howard told me he don't have no easement, because they didn't give him one.
There, there's not an easement. It's his land actually touches the right-of-way. So he has that full right-of-way width that he has access to.
The, the county maintenance stops about 70 foot from his property line, okay?
Currently.
And, and I'm the one back there with shovels and rakes when it, if you look at some of the pictures where the water comes out, because he's up on a real bad incline. And where the water's running out underneath his gate, you can see where it, it has been washed out. And then you can see where it's not right now, because I have to maintain it.
And as I just said, we are willing to maintain to that property line.
Okay, and I appreciate that. Is there any way that you can maybe get him to move his gate entrance over to the right a little bit? It'll still be on the right-of-way.
No, sir, we can't, we don't necessarily dictate exactly where they, they, uh, enter, enter or exit our right-of-way.
Well, then what's going, what's gonna happen with the place that I can't rent it? Because I, I have been told by a, a, a gentleman that wants to lease that place that he will not live there under those conditions, and he won't rent it. Now, I, I use my hard-earned money to purchase property, because it's a good investment, to help me on my retirement. Now, if this, if this is gonna, uh, up, you know, between me and my girlfriend, we're raising four grandkids. Three, four, and five is the, is the youngest one, and a 13 and a half. And we like for them to go back there and be able to play back there on that dead-end street without any interference. When, when they back there, and you know you can't keep your eye on a child all the time. But, but when they coming in and out, they speed up. I'm not, I'm not exaggerating. They speed up, make you grab your kids and run with them. And this is just not right.
Mr. Weaver, I understand your concerns. I think we have an issue of what the law allows. We are, we are bound by state law in terms of what we can and cannot do and what we can require. I'll be happy to have our legal department take a closer look at this. But we, we cannot, we cannot violate state law. We, we have to stay within the requirements of the law. And so I think that, that's the issue that we have here. You know, we can't keep a citizen off of a public right-of-way. And, and, and I think that's where the misunderstanding is, is coming in. So, uh, let, we, you know, I'll have our attorney take a look at this situation, and we can, uh, we'll provide a letter to let you know exactly what the law says and what the county can and cannot do legally, okay?
Well, thank you, Ms. Hudson. And, uh, if y'all will keep in mind that, that, uh, his, uh, his, his tax assessment is still, uh, listed under McQuary Road and not Alice Drive. He stuck a mailbox back there and started using that, just because it was more convenient for him. And then started letting his, uh, family use it that lives on a totally different street. I don't think that's right. But, uh, I, I, I respect what you're telling me, and, and I appreciate if you look into it and see what y'all can do. Even if you can just maybe get him to understand if he moves his gate down a little bit more to where we won't have to stop when each other's coming in or out. That would help a whole lot. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do we have other speakers?
There are no, there are no speakers, Commissioner.
Okay.
First, I would like to read the 2021 County Legislative Achievement Report. First one is Governor's enactment of a law allowing for safer places to be established statewide for severe weather. Governor's enactment of law streamlining nomination process for County Board of Equalization. The Governor's enactment of law expanding location options for county property taxes. Now, the agenda. Number one, approve minutes of the special meeting of April 5th, 2021.
Some moved.
Second.
Number two, approve the list of claims.
Some moved.
Second.
Number three, hold a public hearing so any citizen in the county shall be given an opportunity to be heard.
The public hearing is now in session. Are there any speakers for or against? Here none. The public hearing is now closed.
Number four, approve refund for tobacco tax stamps damaged and destroyed as follow.
Some moved.
Second.
Number five, approve proposal to the U.S. Board on Geographic Names to name reservoir located in Saraland, Alabama, Celeste Lake.
Some moved.
Second.
Number six, approve professional services agreement with InspireU LLC an amount of $30,000 from District One funds for professional services event connection calendar platform for Mobile County Commission.
Some moved.
Second.
Number seven, approve accepting retirement of Donald Adams from Mobile County Industrial Development Authority and approve appointment of Frank Everett to serve out the unexpired term ending June 17, 2024.
Some moved.
Second.
Number eight, approve renewal of code enforcement software agreement with Comcast an amount of $11,672.19 for environmental an amount of $11,672.19 for Environmental Enforcement Department.
So moved.
Second.
Number nine, approve contract amendment number five with WAS Design, Inc. for design of Escataba Hollow Park and Campground Phase 1B and related items.
So moved.
Second.
Number 10, authorize advertising for requests for proposals for the Mobile County Post Disaster Debris Removal Monitoring Services Contract.
So moved.
Second.
Number 11, authorize advertising for bid for the Mobile County Post Disaster Debris Removal.
So moved.
Second.
Number 12, approve amending the 2019 Capital Improvement Plan to create project in estimated cost as follows: $200,000, Odd Fellows Park Construction. This amendment creates project Odd Fellows Park Construction and decreases project District Three unnamed projects by $200,000.
So moved.
Second.
Number 13, approve rejecting all bids for vehicle maintenance facilities for camps and authorized to rebid for Camp One only.
So moved.
Second.
Number 14 was voted at the conference. Number 15, approve correction in March 22nd, 2021 Minutes Agenda Item Number 21 to read as follows: Approve sponsorship for Assistant League Mobile in a total amount of $1,000 to be divided among the amount of $333.34 from District One Funds, the amount of $333.33 from District Two Funds, and the amount of $333.33 from District Three Funds for annual fund for philanthropy fundraiser.
So moved.
Second.
Number 16, approve a contract with Youth on the Winning Side New Image in the amount of $16,250 from District One Funds to benefit its annual youth musical workshop.
So moved.
Second.
Number 17, approve contract with Gulf Coast Ethnic and Heritage Jazz Festival in amount of $10,000 from District One Funds for the Marcus Johnson Summer Jazz Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Number 18, approve contract with Lily B. Williamson High School Parent Teacher Association in amount of $5,000 from District One Funds to resurface the gymnasium floor at Williamson High School, project subject to paperwork and legal review.
So moved.
Second.
Number 19, authorize transferring federal forfeiture funds from the custody of Mobile County Sheriff's Office to Mobile County Commission and establish a new bank account to maintain the funds. The change is in response to the U.S. Department of Justice and U.S. Department of Treasury Equitable Sharing Compliance Requirements.
So moved.
Second.
Number 20, approve request of the Public Affairs Department to purchase a full-page, full-color ad in the June edition of Business Alabama Magazine that spotlight Mobile County as one of Alabama's fastest-growing and most diverse economic centers and features quality of life, arts, culture, education, and health, retirement destinations, outdoor recreation, and natural resources at a cost of $2,088.7.
So moved.
Second.
21, approve intergovernment agreement with the City of Mobile and ASM Global for the use of the Civic Center area expo hall, theater, and Room 16 by the 16th Judicial Circuit for various hearings and court matters for a term ending December 31st, 2021 necessitated by the COVID-19 pandemic. Compensation is limited to staffing and cleaning costs.
So moved.
Second.
And that's 13th Judicial Circuit. You said 16th.
Did I? I apologize. Number 22, approve license agreement with Community Utilities of Alabama, Inc. to occupy and use the public right-of-way for Airport Road for underground installations, operation, and maintenance of sewer pipeline.
So moved.
Is this Airport Road on, off of Ben Hamilton?
I believe that's correct, Commissioner.
Okay, second.
23, approve an award bid to Thomas Industries, Inc. for Government Plaza Meeting Room renovations for a total bid in the amount of $180,681.
So moved.
Second.
24, approve change order number two with J. Hunt Enterprises for improvements in Americans with Disabilities Act upgrades for Odd Fellows Festival Park. The change order will provide for reallocation of the remaining funds to cover the cost of additional scope work items, and the total contract amount will not change.
So moved.
25, approve change order number two with Ben M. Ratcliffe Contractor, LLC. Addition to the Mobile County Metro Jail for the removal of contaminated soil and a replacement of, of removed soil. The change will increase the contract by $389,208, and the new contract total will be in the amount of $14,638,208.
So moved.
Second.
26, authorize advertising for bids, projects, Sims Senior Center improvements kitchen bill out.
So moved.
Second.
27, approve change order number one with Tyndale Construction, LLC, eight mile license commissioners improvements. The change will increase the contract amount by $14,000 for the installation of data cabling and equipment, and the new contract total will be in the amount of $159,518.
So moved.
Second.
28, approve renewal contract with Thompson Reuters in the amount of $759,028 per month for 12 months effective May 2nd, 2021 for West Proflex subscription for probate court.
So moved.
Second.
29, approve memorandum of understanding with Alabama Housing Finance Authority relating to the sharing of information in order to avoid duplicative payments under the Emergency Rental Assistance Program as required by anti-fraud and anti-duplication requirement of the Consolidated Appropriation Act adopted December 27, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Number 30, approve amendment around understanding with Mobile Band of Choctaw Indians relating to the sharing of information in order to avoid duplicative payments under the Emergency Rental Assistance Program as required by anti-fraud and anti-duplication requirements of the Consolidated Appropriation Act adopted December 27, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
The following three, 31, 32, 33, will take together, and it reads, "Contract with University of South Alabama in the amount of $4,640 from District One, Two, and Three Funds for its literacy and video production camp."
So moved.
Second.
34, approve institutional consulting services with investment management agreement with Raymond James and Associates for a year-to-year term for quarterly fees based on the market value of the county's account.
So moved.
Second.
35, approve investment manager, manager agreement with Sage Advisory Services, LTD Company to act as investment manager and advise with respect to account assets of the county's investment portfolio, fees to be paid quarterly, and annual percentage based upon the net asset value of the account assets.
So moved.
36, approve resolution to apply to the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs for an amount of $700,000 of the state's portions of the CDBG-CV funds, and authorize the President of the Commission to sign all documents associated with this grant.
So moved.
Second.
37, approve amending the Mobile County compensatory time policy to provide holiday compensatory time for all employees whose regularly scheduled off day falls on a county holiday, and to adjust the maximum number of holiday compensatory time hours earned for employees involved in law enforcement activities to reflect the new floating holiday. The amendment will be effective upon approval by the Personnel Board.
So moved.
Second.
38, consider taking the following action of bids.
So moved.
Second.
39, approve rental agreement with Sun Belt Rentals under the current purchasing cooperative agreement, Omnia Partners Contract, in the amount of $21,643.88 for a 150-ton chiller at Metro Jail for the period of May 8, 2021 through August 2nd, 2021 for Building Maintenance Department.
So moved.
Second.
Number 40, approve renewal support agreement with TSA, Inc. in the amount of $2,373.60 for HP servers and storage of, for the period of June 1st, 2021 through May 31st, 2022 for the County Commission.
So moved.
Second.
41, approve appointments of Gloria Tate for Place Five, Chantula District, and reappointment of Nathaniel Cotton for Place Six, Kusla District, to serve on the Board of Directors of Kusla Water District for a four-year term, each both expiring on April 25th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
42, approve adjusting retiree insurance rates from 25% for single coverage and 35% for family coverage to 20% for single coverage and 20% for family coverage to be effective June 1st, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
43, approve appointment of Olada Olaba, a niece, to serve on the Board of Directors of Alterpoint Health Systems, Inc., to serve Al Mavina Holloway, who's resigned, unexpired term ending April 1st, 2027.
So moved.
Second.
44, recommend approving right-of-way and/or easement agreements for Track 27 in the amount of $2,415, Track 32 in the amount of $4,552, Track 36 in the amount of $2,285, and Track 46 in the amount of $860 for Project Joyce Circle Lloyd Road, Williams Road, Gray Drain, Basin Pave.
So moved.
Second.
45, recommend authorizing acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds and/or easements from the following property owners for the following projects.
So moved.
46, recommend approving right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track 2 in the amount of $500 for Project Tanner Williams Road.
So moved.
Second.
47, recommend approving right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track 5 in the amount of $4,034.76 per McDavid Road.
So moved.
Second.
Number 48, recommend approving correction in the February 22nd, 2021 Minutes Agenda Item Number 299E to read as follows: Changing the functional classification of River Road from minor local to major local, and Bay Road from minor local to major local.
So moved.
Second.
49, recommend awarding bid for a project Old Highway 43 resurfacing restoration and rehabilitation to H.O. Weaver and Sons, Inc. for their low bid in the amount of $429,777.52.
So moved.
Second.
Number 50, recommend a rolling bid for a project Sunset Railroad Bridge Replacement to McGinnis Construction, LLC for their low bid in the amount of $1,364,687.77.
So moved.
Brian, do you know when they're going to start that project, the date?
Commissioner, I understand that there is a delay with the actual fabrication of a new steel bridge, so probably the latter part of this year before we actually get that done.
Okay, second.
Number 51, hold a public hearing so any citizen of the county shall be given an opportunity to present data, views, and arguments concerning the County Commission's intent to apply for fiscal year 2022 transportation alternative funds through the Mobile Metropolitan Planning Organization to construct and/or repair curved ramps in the unincorporated area of Mobile County.
The public hearing is now in session. Are there any speakers for or against this item? Here none, the public hearing is now closed.
Number 52, hold a public hearing so any citizen of the county shall be given the opportunity to present data, views, and arguments concerning the County's Commission intent to apply for fiscal year 2022 transportation alternative funds through Alabama Department of Transportation to construct a sidewalk along Cottage Hill Road from Dawes Road to Leroy Stevens Road and along Leroy Stevens Road from Cottage Hill Road to the West Mobile County Park Recreation Complex.
The public hearing is now in session. Are there any speakers for or against? Here none, the public hearing is now closed.
And we have one add-on? Add-on reads, "Approve application to the U.S. Department of Homeland Security Federal Emergency Management Agency for the 2021 Port Security Grant Program for $207,600. On behalf of the Mobile County Sheriff's Office for the period October 1st, 2021 through September 30th, 2024, with a match of 25% to be paid by the Mobile County Sheriff's Office."
So moved.
Second.
53, commission announcements and/or comments.
Did we do this one? This was the recycle, coin recycler?
It was on that Thursday.
Was it Thursday? Okay, okay. I forgot.
But I didn't remember just now. Did you read the item about the coin recycler for the?
Was that, did we do that Thursday?
For the Revenue Commissioner. I know it was on the agenda Thursday.
Yeah, it was under the agenda items.
Pardon me?
It's under the agenda items.
Okay.
It was under the bid. It was under the bid items.
Oh, the bid, okay. All right. Just wanted to make sure that if there was another add-on, that we didn't forget it. Thank you. Okay. I don't have anything.
Got anything?
No, ma'am.
So we have three retirees, effective May 1st. Steve Lumpkin, County Engineering and Public Works with 18 years of service. Anna Waters Cousins from the Mobile County Sheriff's Office with 30 years of service. And Don Alfonsi, also with the Sheriff's Office, Mobile Metro Jail, with 17 years of service. Wish them best of luck in their retirement. Also, this week is National Work Zone Awareness Week, and we're just asking the public, if you will, just be safe. We have people out on the roads, AlDOT does, a lot of companies out there doing work, and they're doing work to make our roads better. So just slow down. The most expensive ticket I ever got was in the construction jungle, and I was, I was more embarrassed. I was ready to pay the ticket because I was so embarrassed because I didn't slow down. So let's slow down this week and watch. We've got a lot of work going on in the community, and that's a good thing, but we need to make sure those people out there working are safe. Thank you.
Number 54, approve request for motion to adjourn until May 10th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
I need to take a three-minute break before the Indigent Care Board meeting.
Sonny called you today?
Mm-mm. Wow.
He's calling me about some piece of legislation or something. I don't know, he just, he called and then he texted me, so I don't know what it's about. Something about enforcing gun laws or something?
I found it. I found it, dork. Okey-dokey. It must be Monday. I'd like to call the order the April 26, 2021 Mobile Indigent Care Board meeting for the Mobile County Commission.
Number one, approve the minutes of the meeting of March 22nd, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Number two, accept a report from the Mobile County Commission of the Balance of the Indigent Care the Indigent Care Fund at March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Funds available, two hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and ninety-two cents.
So moved.
Second.
Number three, approve the disbursement of Indigent Care Fund cash receipts on April seventh, twenty twenty-one, for the period January twenty twenty-one through March twenty twenty-one, to the following entities in the following amounts.
So moved.
Second.
Number four, approve request for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, have a great week.